All right, I make the motion, come out of executive session.
Second.
There's a third there somewhere.
Steve.
We're out of it.
We're out.
All right, let the record reflect that we took no action or made any decisions and whatever else I'm supposed to say, but we only discuss personnel and no litigation. Do I have to have a motion?
Before I done a motion, it's second.
I'm in second.
Okay.
All in favor. Huh? All in favor.
All in favor, ayes. NFOs. All right, we're out of the executive session.
Paint class.
We're out.
We're out. Twice.
All right, Mr. Harrison, come on up.
Mr. Harrison.
That's the third of it.
We got Lynn Norris walking in.
Did y'all put him off until 12:30?
Sir, yes, sir.
Really? That's pretty good timing. I was saying, I think he been out there ten at two hours.
He has.
Yeah, I could've used a longer hour or two, I know.
He has been here for two hours.
Yeah.
Has he?
Yeah.
I'd like going to your place.
Mike, go where? I don't want to be up there. Mike wants to hide.
I got to go to Starbuck's, can't. They have a special coffee for that. I came from Aspen, we rode around the whole place to burn it, you can't.
Hey, where is that printout we asked for?
Send it to you.
Craig, you want to hand that out? Craig, you want to hand that out?
Sent you one.
Good afternoon, sir, sorry for the delay.
Thank you, sir.
I didn't, my phone doesn't have that big a screen.
You don't have blow up mode?
I have blow up my screens.
I just have to run it side to side, keep up.
Lynn, how are you?
Doing well, how you doing?
We're getting there.
It's good.
Any, I just ask a general question here, are we, any kind of interest rate sensitive right now? Do you think the rates are going to do anything next thirty, sixty days, if we move quicker than not?
Rates have been stable, if you track the ten year, so.
So you think we're okay as far as, I mean, sometimes I know we got to be quick because something may be pending that may push it, but based on what information you've got, that we've got a little time here, maybe?
It's, it's an excellent rate environment. Rates, they're just like this right here.
Right.
I mean, the ten year was almost at a three fifty, came down to about a two forty-five, it's about a two sixty-two now, so it's just, in that timeline, it's just kind of like that right there. The, the short-term rates are tracking higher, so, you know, banks would be looking more at that type of rate.
And what kind of term are you throwing out at us from these bank? What is it? What number do they like to see to get them interested?
Twelve years, twelve to fifteen years.
They go twelve, fifteen? What do we need to do here, Mr. President, or whatever, to move forward? Where do we need to go?
I have a question for Tim. Hey, Tim?
Yes, sir.
Under the, the Gunner Road Extension?
Uh-huh.
You got the county estimate of two point eight seven five.
Right.
What is that in total? Is that us putting two point eight in it?
It is the, from, from information we learned yesterday, or I learned yesterday, if you look under Gunner Road, there's two point eight in grant. I understand that can't be used for Gunner Road, so it's.
That's correct.
It would, it's got to be used for Gunner Road Extension. So, the county portion of Gunner Road Extension would be the seventy-five thousand direct construction. And the.
All right, so that would lower the price.
The Gunner Road Extension money doesn't impact the MPO money, right? I mean, they don't care?
That is MPO money.
No, no, not.
Oh, you mean from the state?
Yeah, that's BP, we got BP money from, from, for two point eight. It cannot be used but for Gunner Road Extension, but it failed in committee. So, does that impact us on MPO, as far as our three million or whatever we have to come up with?
No.
I, I don't think it does, but nobody's told me that, I haven't asked the CNPD that specific question, I don't know the answer, but here's. CNPD doesn't care where your match money comes from, it's just that you match it.
So you're using, you would effectively be using the BP funds as your match for Gunner Road.
Extension.
Art, so, Art, so help me with this for a second. If we take the, since the money died in committee, it has to stay on extension, that comes back over, you're looking in the neighborhood of one point three million or so?
That's right.
For Gunner Road Extension?
Completion, that's right.
Explain to me again why we need Gunner Road Extension?
Okay, I mean, if you, Gunner Road Extension is a road that would go through about three miles of, basically land like land.
Okay.
It ties you into, from Gunner Road, from, excuse me, from forty-nine, it ties you into Florence Barren Road. Okay, Florence Barren Road then connects you to fifty-five, and also now connects you, because the Clinton Barren Parkway is being built, it connects you to Clinton Barren Parkway that is actually tied into what's called Siwell, and that brings you out in the general proximity of the Continental Tire out there west of Clinton.
All right, so I guess my, my concern on the whole thing on the extension project is why do we need it? Have we done a study? Have we done any kind of?
Well.
Of, of diving into it to see that coming into a, beginning a new project with all the other projects that are here?
It's a, it's, it's kind of like, it's kind of like the roads that were built up in other parts of the county. It opens up, it's kind of like, what's the, I call it Parkway. It opens up a place for development, it opens up a place, and the transportation, right now, there's no way to even get from, from, from forty-nine to fifty-five unless you go all the way up for, from that south end, unless you go all the way up to twenty and cut across and go that way.
All right, so all of?
So this, this, I mean, when I say that, there's no way, anything, anything over a UPS truck.
So, so, so what do you think the traffic count on that would be every day, if you built the extension?
It's, it's a.
Would it be the same as Gunner Road?
Uh, well, that's kind of two different things. That, that one is going to enhance the other, is really what it's going to do. One's enhance the other. It will have a different type of traffic and some of the claimed Gunner Road traffic, but it's also going to have a, a safety factor, there's a lot of factors in that. If, if you have an accident on twenty, you can't even get around.
All right, the people, you're going to cut the road through, do they know it's coming?
Mm-hmm.
They're for, they're all for it?
I've, all I've had is when you're going to start.
So you have no pushback on any of the land numbers?
I've had no pushback on anything. I, I even had some suggestions, there's an old logging road back here, y'all probably could use part of that to start with.
Yeah, so everybody's home, there'd be property that would be affected?
I've had no.
No pushback whatsoever?
No.
You could talk, you could talk to Pat Sullivan too. Pat's in favor of that.
Is this in the city?
Well, it's not, it's in, it's in the county, you know, it's in between the two cities.
All of us in the city? I mean, all of us in the county?
No.
You've got such a cluster of area going through downtown Florence, that's where they had Ehrlich Road to have to leave it up to the south, now they're trying to address something to the north.
That was the last bond issue on Ehrlich Road, that we put a bunch of money into it?
Was it a bond issue, was it a bond issue the road?
Part of the bond, part of the bond issued last time was Ehrlich Road, I guess that's how you pronounce it.
It was, well, yeah, but also this was part of the bond.
That's the correction right there, it shows how the money on extension would work in light of the fact that the legislature did not allow for either road project to be a part of the BP.
Basically, basically what you're looking at here is about one point three to do Gunner Road, I mean, Gunner Road Extension to complete it, and then you're looking at about five point, uh, three, what is that, to, uh, Gunner, looking at five point three to do Gunner, so you're looking at about six, eight.
Seven, eight.
Just six, no, six, about six, six million eight hundred ninety-two thousand to accomplish roughly thirteen million two hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars worth of work.
I, I just think it's a bad idea, I know we're getting money, but I think it's a bad idea taking on debt to start a new road that we don't even know for sure we need it or not.
Yeah, well, it's, you know, Florence did a resolution recently, they all supported, all I'm hearing is when, when's it going to start?
Yeah, but the problem is, we don't have the money, that's the only, that's the only hiccup.
Well, the only, the thing.
It's really, for me, it's really hard to turn down five point eight million. And tip money, you know, it's really hard. Even if it's not a road today, that has so a lot of demand, we walk away from our project, we're walking away from five point eight million dollar road and not going to get back anytime soon, now we're going to get penalized for it.
The opportunity may never come back up.
Yeah.
Tate said, no, we're not going to move the money to the other road, and now we've got three million of MPO, two point eight of state. We just like it, now this almost becomes just, yeah, let's do it because we only got a billion two in it, and we're going to open up a part of the county, and not to mention we're going to leave any traffic in Florence, we've got both entities up there that like it, like the project.
I guess my thing, we're going to put a million dollars in Gunner Road itself right now. Or Gunner Road.
Well, pardon.
Well, we put two fifty in the last bond issue on Gunner Road, and then now we put another eight hundred thousand in Gunner Road right now on land acquisition.
I'm not advocating the Gunner Road part, I'm just advocating the Gunner Road extension.
I'm just saying, we've already started working on that.
Well, I mean, we've always, you can always pull back and wait till a different timeline to do something, because I mean, Gunner Road's got the Shreve County money, it's not getting any play from the state or for MPO, so at the end of the day, we decide, for whatever reason, not to go that way, we just have to pull back, as I said, we're going to stop it, then come back at a later date, but we have more funds on ourselves to do something.
Have we done any work designed at extension right now?
We have been, we're doing some environmental stuff, we, we cut them loose last year.
We tested them with environmental design, we've already surveyed.
You can't take the two point eight out first and then match it. They, they're in for half of the project.
The total project.
Yeah.
All right, Tim.
Jay.
One has been done on Gunner Road Extension to this point today.
To this point, we're into the environmental, we've, we've done an alignment, we've done survey work for the alignment, we're in the process right now tweaking that alignment, you know, as, as you go, you find things that don't show up on air photography and that kind of stuff, and you put boots on the ground, so we're tweaking that, and we're in what I call the preliminary engineering stage, but there's been quite a bit of work done at this point.
Let me add, let me add something.
What happens if the people don't want to sell their land back over to us? How do we acquire the land? We just take it?
They hadn't asked us to not sell it.
Huh?
We had no problem with not selling it.
We, if you, we hadn't tried to buy this land, haven't, on Gunner Road Extension?
We're not going to have a problem, huh? I promise you, you don't have a problem. Well, look at, look at this.
Who controls the dollar amount we set on them? The homeowner, or the property owner?
No. What? Yeah, no, I'm saying, no, I think, answer this part, he's saying who controls that, well, sure, if they want to say, I want a million dollars from my acre land, that's absurd, but I'm saying, when, when the right of way guys go out there.
But is that number flexible?
Not very flexible.
It's not?
Not, not real flexible, and he, explain, Craig, listen, if, if you're, you're not that flexible on the amount of, you can offer individuals.
Acquiring the, the three miles or however far it is. So twenty-one different owners? And all twenty-one are on board?
This is your total.
So we really are going to be out.
Okay.
Lots of different parcels of land that have been quarantined at times, so some spanned the.
One point three.
Yeah, no, you're one point two now? That's the two things you're at.
Jim Turner and Greg Thompson, those guys, they actually go out and conduct an appraisal.
And that.
An additional appraisal.
We're all in.
And they develop a per square foot price.
Yeah, I mean.
And they take the legal descriptions and add all that up, that's the amount they go.
I can figure that in.
So that's how that project works.
But if one of those eighteen property value, or property owners say, no, I don't want it sold, then we got to go around. You got, or you got to take it from them.
Yeah, it might, just like you would any, like you would Grant's Ferry Road, East Metro, whatever.
And you're willing to open up that can of worms?
We had to do it unfortunately on one other, back in several years ago. He wanted six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for less than acre land.
We had to take, we had to take one parcel on the Gunner Road project that's already been completed, so it's not.
Wound up not being a real issue at all, once he realized we weren't on it.
Out of, the Gunner is ninety, ninety-six parcel, so only one property owner, that was actually someone that didn't have capacity.
Right, he, he was thinking about, yeah. And, but it wasn't any increase or anything?
Hey, Lynn. I want to ask you a question while you're actually here.
Yes, sir.
Is there like a minimum number that we need to, to bond, to get our money's worth?
Well, looking at kind of where the projections are, you, you have sixteen million dollars and change, that's, you're part of the projects above the grants, so, yes, you need to go above that, that number.
Yeah.
You need to go above the sixteen million?
Yes, sir. You don't have to issue, I mean, once we get, this is the intent to go forward with it, you only issue what you need to, out of whatever number you decide that you need. Eighteen million or whatever what it is, you issue up to that amount, you could not exceed that amount without going out with another intent to increase the amount, which would be another thirty-day period for it to run.
So what was being proposed on the amount of bonds that we do?
I think we were using, just for projection purposes, we were using sixteen D.
I thought we were using fourteen, and then we're doing the other, other that would make an equivalent sixteen.
That's correct.
Projection like that?
Right.
Well, hang on a second, all right, we're saying sixteen million, well, we got twenty-two million dollars worth of project. Well, I see the county cost is fourteen. The county cost is fourteen.
Right.
So we're projecting to do sixteen because we're going to be taking two point eight million dollars out of our road fund.
Right.
Yes, sir. To fund a sixteen million dollar bond issuance, you would need debt service millage sufficient to cover that in light of what you're already servicing, and I think Lynn's calculation was, you would, you would want to move road and bridge millage over to debt service, initially it was point eight five, we relifted that cap because we, we saw that we could up the total takedown to sixteen million if we moved a full one mil over. And the idea at the time that was being floated around was that two million of the sixteen million would be made available for current road maintenance in your road department.
But we're actually going to be taking two point eight? So that's not double for your money, then?
No, uh-uh, the.
If we're shifting over, well, I mean, two point six million.
Yeah, I see that, yeah.
In one mil, about one point three?
Yeah, that's right, yeah, you're right.
It was making, it was making the road fund whole.
But that's not the.
Well, with, with the, we can make it whole, I mean.
Yeah, I get it, I get it, we just had to take away from another project, that doesn't make that happen.
Or we can tweak it, I mean, that's only.
So what was the reasoning on going from point eight to the, the whole mil?
To make the, not, 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 to make the road fund whole, you got projects out of the road fund that would qualify for bond fund usage, so, rather than spending it out of cash during this two-year period,
Yeah.
you, you're spending money there, and the road fund is made whole. I mean, it's, it's not, it, it doesn't have any burden.
Because I've heard options on depleting the road fund, then I heard options on we're going to deplete the cities, on what we're transferring to those guys.
Deplete the road fund.
Take money out of the road fund, take money away that we give to the cities in the first two years, all of these are bad options to me.
Well, the, the total amount that you took away from the cities would be what?
Was it a hundred thousand from Brandon?
Well, I know that, I'm in total, I got it.
Hundred and thirty thousand from Flowood, hundred and fifty thousand from Pearl.
Well, it's less than Pearl, Pearl's less than Flowood.
Well, I mean, they're all still around a hundred thousand dollar rates.
I know, I'm just saying.
For two years, so two hundred thousand, from the same cities, they come back to us and ask us for money. So, I'm in total.
Is that the breakdown on the numbers?
That's the city breakdown number, I think.
Florida put together.
Mm-hmm, right.
Before she, or.
That's right. Yeah, I've seen, I've seen.
Yeah, so, so you take a hundred and thirty-six, a hundred and thirty-six thousand from Flowood the first year, a hundred and twenty-two thousand from Pearl Soap, two fifty over the next couple of years.
But y'all saw on all of the running county deals where Brandon was getting unexpected six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in half the loan taxes, that's us too, because if they're getting it, we're getting it to some degree, because it's new house talk. Which told me, between Pepsi bottle companies coming back online with tax roll, and, and just new countertops that finally come on the tax line, that's where.
Did we do a tip for Pepsi? I don't think we did a tip for Pepsi.
He, he just said that, that, that they're at a hundred twenty grand a year.
Well, I mean, but we already were getting our Pepsi, but that's not going to be an ad.
I bet there was a tax exemption.
That's what I'm saying.
He said, he said if they get some, we.
They want a tip, they just got an exemption, okay, I get it. All right, well, I'm sure they'll come back and make some addition to, you know, get that exemption back.
But I'm just saying, by the Lord, our project is looking, our financials picture is looking.
Well, look, I, I'm not, I, I'm not, if we do this, I don't want to take the, I just want to take the money out of cash and not shift the millage, I know it's six one, have another, but I don't want to take the city's money, because basically, I represent Pearl, Flowood, and I'm the one they going to be coming to.
I got a part of Flowood myself.
I got a part of Pearl.
Listen.
Yes, sir.
They, 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 unless you shift the millage, you're going to have to increase millage, because the bond and interest fund cannot support that debt during this roll-off period. I mean, that's, that's where we would be with it. This, this millage, this money that we, we're funding through the bonds for the road fund is two point one million dollars.
Well, then, let's just take the millage out of road, but don't shift the millage to debt.
How are you going to fund the debt obligation, Jay?
Well, we can take the millage out of the road, but we don't actually have to transfer the mil.
You have to assign it to the bond and interest category, otherwise.
That's fine, but, I mean, six one, have another, I don't want to shift the millage out of road over into debt service. We can still pull, and we do it already, we pay bonds out of, out of road.
Well, we're still paying the previous bond, so shouldn't we get that one paid off and cleared the next couple of years before we start down the track of something new?
It's, it's paying off.
Right, in two years, it'll be done, right?
Well, that's just one of them.
One of them, right, so my, my point is, we're just still stacking into the problem on, I, I get it, we got these other problems, we put a million dollars into Gunner Road like it is right now, there's, we put money into the Holly Bush, the Andrew Chapel's in desperate need of it, there's other projects that are here, so why would we go on and take on another project that hadn't even started? I understand you're getting five million dollars, I got, they're going to give you five million, the, the state's giving you two point eight to sit there as long as it wants to sit there.
I wouldn't, that's not the best way.
The, the BP money?
Best way is to reallocate.
So the BP money only has two year, only has three years?
No.
How can we do that still?
Once BP money is pulled down.
Yep.
Keeping the road fund whole.
Yeah.
Oh, the cities, don't.
So the BP money's not just hanging on to it to your project, you only got three years to spend, so can this project be done? Well, I guess you'd spend all that upfront, wouldn't you? And say, is there any cap on the other money?
So I, we can make this work, and how are we going to make that work? To where they still keep their money?
Listen.
That's why I was suggesting.
Oh, okay.
Listen, we, we started this and, and we, you know, we ran into obstacles, and we found a way to overcome each one, and we didn't think we'd get certain money from, we got the two point eight from some state, then we, you know, we talked about, let's apply for the MPO money, and we applied for several other things down here. All right, bam, we got it, never have we gotten this much money before, on any time we've applied. Okay, then we ran into obstacle, where we going to get the money? Well, then Lynn comes in here, we call, talk to him, he comes in here, he overcomes that obstacle. I mean, you know, we, we're at a point that we can complete all this, including all these that, in everywhere, and we complete all this, and we overcome this obstacle, and we're going to be able to do twenty-two million dollars worth of work for, uh.
Fourteen.
For fourteen. I mean, that's, that's great business if you look at it in a way, I mean, I don't know how you not.
If you had the money to do it.
But he has showed us how we can do it, and that's my, that's what, that's all I'm saying. We've, we've overcome each obstacle, and now it seems like we're looking for an obstacle, not to keep, go, accept it, move on, and, and, and make a great impact to rest of the county.
But we have more, we have more projects and more demand for things coming up, other than what's on this little project list. There's, there's, there's several more. We got five hundred and seventy thousand going to Mill Creek, on that litigation side of that. You've got to turn right around, and between myself and Gaines's district, we got seventy miles of overlay to be done up there. So we, I mean, there's tons of stuff that needs to be happening, and then we're going to put.
Wait a minute, I, I agree with what you said, but then, we didn't want to take the money out of the general fund.
Or take it out of roads, what you're saying?
No, we didn't want to take it out of our general funds, we kept talking about how much can we take down, and we realized we were taking down too much, so that's when we got Lynn in here, and he came up with the system. So we still got that money to work on these, some of these additional projects, because you're not talking about massive. I mean, I have, uh, I mean, I've got, we got roads all over the county, you, I mean, you're right, I understand that, but the way the budget's set up, with Mike's budget, he still is going to be able to do these projects. So we're not taking away from that. We're, we're, huh? Go ahead, now go ahead.
But we're going to end up putting half of the bond, and half of the money we come back and, and bond out on two projects, on two roads. Of the fourteen million dollars, you're going to put seven million dollars on Gunner Road and Gunner Road Extension.
We're going to put one point three and six.
And five point three.
Five point three.
So seven million dollars of half of the fourteen millions going to two roads.
I mean, I understand that.
Does that make any sense?
Yeah, it does. It does, I mean, if you're going to get thirteen million dollars worth of road for.
So what I'm saying is, you're going to do a fourteen million dollar bond, that's going to affect everybody's pot, the whole thing. Fourteen million of that, and you're going to take seven million of it and put it on, on two roads.
Well, we've done that, we've been down this road before.
How many miles is Gunner Road?
Uh, I don't know, how many miles is Gunner Road? It's going to be about five.
Say, three, three miles, about five miles?
About five.
So you're going, so, all right, look, so you're going to go five miles of Gunner Road, this new project on Gunner Road Extension is how many miles?
Three point something.
Okay, so you're nine miles, so for nine miles of road, we're going to spend seven million dollars.
Well, that's the same way when, if you look at all over the county, we've done things in the past over the years.
It just don't make sense to me.
Grant's Ferry Parkway, uh.
I'm only one vote, so.
East Metro, things like that.
That's enough to say you got big Gunner Road.
Huh?
Well, he's saying he's going to do both of them.
Well, Gunner Road Extension, man, that's what Jerry, and Jerry, I don't blame Jerry for, for putting forth the effort to get both projects done. We ain't going to vote for both of them.
I, I'm.
You got, you got Gunner Road Extension as one project, you got Gunner Road as another project, you got Andrew Chapel as one. Ain't that, if you've got something that you want to throw in the mix, throw it out there in the mix, and well, I'll vote it.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, I don't see where in the world we're going to put seven million dollars of the fourteen million dollar bond money on two roads for nine miles, it just don't make any sense.
If you knew, if you knew the area more and saw, Daniel, these are, these are vital.
Gunner Road has less than three thousand cars per day, according to MDOT's traffic study on it. You don't believe them? Or maybe they're wrong.
And, and, uh.
That's what they put on your site.
And look, with the, with the highway work down there and everything there, it's, this is a vital time for us to do this. It's going to, it'll have to take some of the traffic off of forty-nine that's a mess, even when it's completed, it gives you an avenue, there's, there's, nobody down there, everybody's just asking, when you going to start? When's it going to start?
Well, you don't have to vote up and down this list, and we can take it off the list, and we just go up the old list of things that we want to do.
Gunner and Gunner Road Extension are basically, need to be a package by, they really do.
Asking the CDs.
Well, I didn't say they have to be, I'm just saying.
Well, I mean, I get, I get that part, Jared, but I, I mean, Daniel is more good, I mean, I get it.
Okay.
So let's hear it, plans, yeah. I'm just, that's just my, my thoughts, so.
What projects go in aside, what, what's the plan on, on dealing with?
Well, I don't want to get ahead of where healthy discussion can help us figure out priorities and all those kind of things, so. I'm, you know, it's kind of, which part are we talking about now, but, so, let's talk quickly about how we might not, how we might be able to follow Lynn's idea and not impact the cities. You're going to have to put your thinking cap on. We would enter into, we could enter into interlocal agreements with each of the municipalities that are affected by moving a mil out of road bridge over to the bond and interest category, which, by the way, is the only way we're going to be able to get a bond. You've got to assign the millage to the debt service, or you don't get there, you won't get the bond. Why? Because your lender, you're not going to get rated by Moody's, and your lenders are not going to make it, because there's not collateral there to satisfy that bond issue, the, the debt service on that bond issue. They've got to be able to see, where is the debt service coming from, and is it committed? Is it not just in a squishy category? Is it not just in a squishy category? If we feel like it, if a board in their infinite wisdom decides to fund that debt service. They're never gonna put themselves in that position. They want a committed debt service amount in a column. That y'all are bound by, and that subsequent boards are bound by. Y'all follow that? So you're gonna impact the cities if you move a mill out of your road bridge. How do you not impact them? We can have an interlocal agreement with each municipality that says, whatever amounts you've been impacted by us moving the mill. Whatever that amount is, we will fund, we will repay you, we will cover that out of the bond money.
I know in the past, we did this, and didn't have to do all that, you know?
Four sixty-five, eight seventy-five, forty, is what your total two year, I'm sorry.
One year.
One year effect on each municipality will be.
Million dollars over the two-year part of.
Basically, yes, sir, basically, it's a half million dollars each year, each year. So you would, you would say, at, on the front end, hey, anybody interested in making a loan to us for a bond? Here are the categories of expenditure that we intend to use for these, and this item of reimbursement for millage lost. Will be one of those themes in there that gets noticed up front. So it's gonna be committed, and that's what Lynn was telling you. Your, your notice will say, we are authorizing issuance of up to eighteen million dollars. Just like the board did in O eight, said up to sixty million dollars, but that board only pulled that, well, only. The board, that board pulled down forty million dollars.
Forty million, yeah.
They left twenty sitting there. It never got issued, and it's way beyond time to go back and get it now. So that's what you would do here, up to eighteen million, you would cover yourself. The idea would be you pull sixteen, right? Or you pull seventeen now under this theory, and you, if, if it's important enough to you that you don't want to impact the cities. Then you're gonna have to account for it out of the bond proceeds.
Let me ask you, is, aren't we about through paying, Steve, aren't we about through on, um, Holly Bush? Do we still owe the nine fifty-five? I'm, I'm asking.
I would say no, we got, maybe one more check. But they're going back and recouping, I think is what they're doing. They're grabbing, going backwards.
So I mean, so really, we kind of, that one, that one would be massage.
It's not fair to look at that, really.
It's Holly Bush. That would be back in Mike's account, because all that's.
Right, just paying him back. Out of this, it, it makes me look like I'm getting more.
So none of, none of his normal standard run-of-the-mill twelve million dollar annual budget from Mike's side. Gets affected by the seventeen million dollar bond project.
In the first two years, that's what we're trying to cover, is how do we make sure that Mike's budget doesn't.
What about years three and four?
Well, at, at that point, we got debt service that rolls off, and you move your mill back over. And the only issue there, Daniel, would be, um, I guess a delay, some sort of delay in actually. Getting the millage moved back over there, but I, I think that's probably.
That's the purpose of doing it, to roll back. The debt service, to pick up.
Do we know how it times out? I guess it would depend on when this bond got issued.
They, they, millage would roll on in FY twenty, which would be this, this September, get up to eighty-seven. And it would roll off in the twenty-two.
There could be, Daniel, just to answer your question, full disclosure, there could be a small delay in that officially. Happening on the books where the mill goes back over. So, but I, I think we'll be able to cover it from a budgeting standpoint, because it's gonna be somewhere. It'll be extra bond and interest category, or it'll be back over into roads.
I just don't, I don't want, I don't, don't want to deplete the cities, I don't want to deplete the road fund. Can't, we absolutely cannot do those two things.
I think, isn't that kind of really what brought you in here?
If we do enough money.
Gotta do fourteen million, or twelve million, probably.
I thought we were at eight.
That's very conservative.
We're in another year.
Gotta go an extra year now.
That is really, really conservative. And I think the banks are gonna be interested in a, in a twelve-year deal. So this, this plan pro formas excellently, in my opinion. It's very conservative.
Alright, so that, that answers the money side of it, right? Where you get the money. Now the issue is how you spend the fourteen million dollars.
Hey, I'd still, I'm not clear on it, but I can talk to you later about it.
No, I mean, ask, ask it away, because I mean, that's assuming you're another version of it.
I, I'm, I'm just, uh, I know we have, what, four mill, what do we, how much do we have in our debt service? I'll believe it, I need them now. Four sixty-three. Are you wanting us to actually move a mill and make it five sixty-three? Alright, and after two years, we're gonna shift it back over in the road. I guess I don't understand that all these years gone by, we've, we've just started a few years ago, even with the debt service fund. You know, we didn't even have one, you know? So I guess I don't understand why we can't just leave the mill in the road fund. And then we wouldn't have to worry about all this interlokal stuff, you know?
You can't, you can't collateralize it for purposes of the bond issue if it's in the road, because y'all have.
You need to take some lessons from Liam Adams.
I don't know who he sweet-talked.
Well, he managed to do it somehow. Alright, okay, I'm with you, I'm with you, I got it, alright. I, I just know this, we ain't always done this, you know, we've done several bonds, way back in oh seven, we didn't do this. You know, so, but, yeah, alright. I'm just, you know, now we gotta go explain to the mayors, we gotta do interlocal with them all. Okay, I'm willing to do it, though, if that's, you know, if that's what it takes to make sure they get their money.
I don't know why we have to do an interlocal with them all. We will, we will do one interlocal that they'll all execute.
Well, still, we're gonna have to go to each one of them and talk to them.
We'll have to explain it, and all of their boards will have to approve it.
Alright, well, let's get down to the proverbial.
Question is, is do we wanna do the bondage? Do we wanna borrow the money?
We ain't got a choice. If we're gonna do any of these projects at all.
We're done with Lynn, and that aspect of it, right? I mean, y'all have any more questions? There's always a Lynn hanging around for this fight.
No, you can get Lynn, thank you, man. You can, you can, uh, you don't have to listen to the rest of this. Yeah, I, I appreciate you sticking around for hours.
I'll let him go leave.
I don't know, we may have. I mean, if you don't, you don't have to stand up.
Oh, just go sit down.
Enjoy it, get in the spot.
Cause I'm sure there's gonna be, like, what if we did this?
And, and the need to make a decision today on these projects is.
Just so we don't. Going down the road, you know, and not only that, from what Craig said about the, the, uh, Gulf money, the BP money. You know, we need to do an interlocal or, or MOU with them, because pretty quick. And we only have three years to do it.
Well, you got, well, you got, you got more than three years. But once you draw the money down, the three-year clock, but if you wait three years to draw the money, I'm sorry, it's not gonna be there anymore.
Saying, so we're gonna have to.
So we need to go ahead and address it and take it.
Now, let's talk about that project, that, that is on Gunner Road.
That's right.
Yeah. Okay, that project is an LPA project, which goes through MDOT. The likelihood on a brand-new route of being in construction in less than two years is.
Not existing.
I don't think it happens. I mean, I, physically, I don't think you can go through their channels. Y'all, y'all seen what the LPA process does.
What about three years?
Just the process.
I thought she had seven years to spend.
That's on, that's on MPO money. That's on MPO money. But you can be using, but you can be using it, as long as you're moving it.
So they know the system, that they know.
Which is why they're not in a hurry.
But you can be moving it along.
Well, I think once you start spending, you got three years then.
Yeah.
Once you.
So you're two years from even having dirt moved on extension.
And that's if we have right of way, or you, you just calculate the end of time to get the right way?
So two, two and a half years before we start even moving a tree on Gunner Road Extension. But you gotta spend two point eight million in three.
Once you start spending.
Once you start spending.
No, no, once we did the MOU.
Once, right.
Once we did the MOU, so how soon would that happen?
There, there is some uncertainty at DFA, and it's it readily, as to when the clock really starts. Or how long you got until you start the clock, okay? Um, what they're, what they're intending is that nobody dilly-dallys. Word I got yesterday was, the director, the DFA director, does not want this money sitting around. Okay, but if you read the MOU and you read their instructions, there is nothing in those instructions or in the MOU that says. You've got to request this money by X date. So there is no real direction on when you go ask for the money. So we've got to figure out, and maybe it's gonna take some phone calls from one of you guys to get more clarity on it, on the issue. We really need to find out what's about the latest that we could come and ask for this, and that could be a central.
Before we start the clock.
Can we, can we at least wait, I, I would ahead and ask a question. Can we at least wait until, uh, after the election? November, December, and the immediate response was, ooh, I wouldn't do that, I wouldn't do that.
No, I think, I don't, I don't see a need in waiting. I mean, as far as, I mean, it's not gonna affect me.
Yeah, but, but Tim just said, if you get in there and start right now, your clock's ticking. You may not be.
The reason that we would, we would want to wait is that the clock doesn't, the three-year clock doesn't start until the MOU.
Oh, I understand that part, but I thought you, I thought you were implying.
We gotta put the million three in.
Three's coming up, soon as we get to do it.
There's nothing to say, you gotta put it up wrong.
I know, but.
No.
But, but in theory, we would.
I was trying to get us the maximum amount of time on the three-year clock, and I was, I was not trying to be as aggressive to ask, can I wait till January?
Wait a minute now, was the two point eight strictly per construction?
Uh, it, it says to assist Rankin County, um.
Yeah, the two point three was the one that was.
There's not a term.
Two point eight seven.
Two point, that would have to go into construction.
Yeah, was it, was it, is it actually farked and?
Yeah, the statute doesn't say precisely.
So you could use some of it.
Yes, uh, it's, uh, I, I saw nothing in the statutes that prohibits us from using it on any point of the project.
Yeah, you, you could get hung up buying your right of way, and you already started drawing some little checks out of.
The whole idea behind this, uh, statute behind this BP thing is as few restrictions as possible. But they still had to put it in the lap of DFA, and they have come up with their own set of prescriptions. I don't remember seeing anything that said what it exactly had to be spent on, other than just a project. So I was trying to get this as far out as I could, not start three-year clock, and FYI. It, the language of the MOU says that we will use our best efforts to spend the proceeds within the three-year. Best efforts, so.
Well, actually, the mon, money's not even, it was in the bond last year, it's just not coming around for this, really, just now coming around. It hadn't really even been put there.
And when I asked, are we gonna get, uh, are we gonna get in trouble if we haven't spent every dime of it in three years? Well, no, not technically, as long as y'all are making good effort towards getting the project completed.
Well, that's the same way the MPO money is.
I know, yeah. I, I wanna, uh, back up here, and I know this fixing, just throw a whole nother wrinkle in it.
Go ahead, man, shake it up.
You know, I mean, I don't have a project, number one, on any of this.
Yeah, let's not even talk about Oak Grove.
Yeah, we are. You know, but, yeah, I, if I'm gonna vote for any of this, I'm gonna get something out of it, or else I'm not gonna go for it.
Go ahead and go to lunch, CJ.
No, I'm good with it.
I understand, and I feel like that I'm kind of being a pig with Andrew Chapel. But Andrew Chapel was in the bond that come before, or not us, back in two thousand seven and eight. So I'm not quite a big hog as he.
Same, same as on this end.
Let's, let's be honest with each other here, though.
Huh?
Let's be honest with each other. The five of us just went headlong down the road. And I kept telling everyone of y'all, we didn't have money paid for all this, and finally, we got to the point where you didn't have a choice.
What are you talking about?
Oh, doing all these projects. We've already spent buying right of way, engineering.
You're correct.
You know, we, we never should have done it.
Well, but honestly, but.
You're correct.
You're right, but see what I'm saying.
We here where we are.
We overcame each obstacle, is what I'm trying, we're trying to show you.
My choice is I've got a road that we're gonna have to close.
I, I get it, man.
And it's in terrible shit.
And we promised those people for twenty years, and we had never done anything. And I still have. I'm not, there's, there's nothing on here. I got gravel roads that they're building, three and four and five hundred thousand dollar houses. Because they wanna live in Rankin County, and I don't have them on here. Uh, I, I'm. I see there's a pretty big number for Andrew Chapel, but after you look back, I don't feel like such a hog. Uh, when you think about, uh, where we been for the last twenty years and, uh, we hadn't moved.
You know, and Steve, and I, there's a lot of, a lot of growth going on both ends. And, and at one time, all this growth came in around the Flowood reservoir area. And there's been things done through the county over the years to help, help that, and I, I'm fully supportive of it. And the last bond, they got a lot of money up there to, to, to finish up old fanning, actually four-laned, after it had been two-laned. Well, well, six-lane, whatever it is now, uh, you know, they, it, they did it one time, and then we got to then have the money to widen it out. So the last bond helped widen it on out, and we redid basically a good road that wasn't sufficient at that time. And so they moved on and then did old fanning, and we did that way back then, in the last bond.
Don't you think the traffic count justifies for that? Don't you think the traffic counts in those areas justify for that movement?
Well, I'm not, I'm not questioning, I'm just saying, it was supported that, and no opposition, understood it needed. It's because it's the part of growth, and we got the same thing going on on both ends of it.
Because you have twenty-five thousand cars per day on that road. We're talking about Gunner Road that has less than three thousand.
I, I don't know about that, you got that many people live on the thing.
Well, I mean, then MDOT's got their numbers wrong, but, and they, and they very well might, I don't know. All I'm saying is, is there's fourteen million dollars here roughly, and se, and seven million of it's for nine miles. It just don't make any sense.
Million dollars worth of work is what, for six point eight million.
But there's more needs in the county other than this stretch of, well, the, the five miles, I guess, with, I guess, which one's the extension, three miles?
Yes.
That doesn't even exist. Nobody's missing that right now, because it's not even there.
It's missed in a lot of ways. I mean, I, I can't argue that.
I, I'm a hundred percent on board doing Gunner Road Extension. We should have pulled the project from Central Plan Development. We weren't gonna do it, the, the state's already given us money.
And it was your idea, I appreciate it.
There's no backing up.
Yeah, I mean, your idea as far as going.
You gotta look on there and find where you're gonna get the money from, bro.
Yeah, well.
Well, let me ask you this, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm just saying, alright. And I know it's coming out one pot and another, but if you, uh, if, if, um, I don't know, what, what did you, what were you trying? I'm not gonna step on your toes, but I'm asking you, what were you saying about Holly Bush money, if it's basically paid for? What were you saying about it, Steve? Where's it going?
Goes back into our road bud, road budget for us to have.
Okay, okay, but really, it's gonna have to go back in there. Huh?
What, the way, the reason why they left that in there is because we're actually not gonna have enough to cover to make the road parting whole. So really, we might as well label that. A road department, you know.
Thought the mill, the mill was gonna do it.
I'll let Craig explain that, Lynn.
Please.
We, the, the impact from moving the mill out of Mike over debt service is roughly in the neighborhood of two sixty, two eighty. The amount that we identified in the bond issue, the bond proceeds, was about six or eight less than that. To make Mike's budget whole.
Okay.
So the Holly Bush reimbursement would make up the rest of that, be effectively.
I looked at stuff from back in the last bond, and the same thing, I mean, you saw where that same method was used, uh, back then.
Cool. I have a question about our millage. Uh, Lynn, do you know how much, uh? Uh, Lynn, do you know how much, uh, that we will have left, say we do fifteen million? How much will we have left to be able, in the future, if we wanna do a bond in the future?
We got.
With our, within our current tax structure?
You don't have a lot of capacity, it's gonna be about four years, a four-year, you know, really be able to go out, structure the debt, get there, if you.
Yeah.
And you got a lot of capacity added to it.
Yeah. But in four year, we base four years for we could address another bond issue.
What are you talking, and you say classy, I mean, how much in between, yeah, yeah, under the current structural, in that four-year period, yeah.
About ten million.
Four point six three million, year twenty thirty.
How many?
Twenty to thirty million.
In four years?
Oh.
Oh.
But you, we have the structure.
Within four years. But now, y'all are gonna need to understand, though, that, that's today, cause we fixing to have a whole bunch of expenses rolling around, like Pers is, they'll get us for seven hundred thousand, you know, uh.
Safety is not getting cheaper.
Yeah, right, and you know.
Nor, nor are these projects gonna be cheaper.
Oh, yeah, let's not forget it, conference center, sir, conference center, but, yeah.
Well, and, and another thing, and Steve just like.
Almost forgot.
That's the only thing I get, that's all I got.
The only thing, oh.
Five hundred thousand dollar project.
Well, let me ask you this, all right.
It's a little bucks, honestly.
Is that, is, I'm, I'm asking Mike for you.
Sir.
Is, is that a project we can do, even if it only, if, if, say, let's say it costs you two hundred to do it?
Hang on, if we gonna do that, we, we might as well get him over on Gunner Road and start doing that work.
Well, I'm just, I'm just asking.
I, I, I was gonna say, no, we ain't got the manpower.
That's fine, I just, just.
Not in favor of him doing it either, I think, he looked at it and he, he could do it, but he's gonna pull from other resources and his data damage is gonna be.
I got you.
Thank you, Lynn.
Okay. Okay.
Jay, Jay's discussion about, you know, where we headed with Oak Grove, my, my concern, uh, and I, I expressed this to Jay, is that some of what we know we need to be doing to address that issue long-term involves private property. It just does.
Yep.
And there's not a lot we can do where we are legally authorized to be that's gonna help the matter. A lot of what needs to be done out there is outside the right of way. And y'all know, I've already, we've already had this discussion a number of times, how we feel about having to get out of right-of-way or off right-of-way to deal with specifically drainage issues. The solution, as I see it, is a long-term solution. We need a drainage district and a mechanism, but while we are doing that, y'all may wanna at least consider funding that. That's not gonna be, uh, free to get established. It needs to be done by professionals. There's gonna have to be interaction with existing political subdivisions to figure out all that works. That, that entity, though, and the preparation for having that entity needs funding, so you may wanna think about, how can we do some seed money to get us to.
And that's where I was getting at. Currently, if we do all these projects, there's no money to be had.
Well, now, remember, Jay, we were not touching the money that we got out there that we looked at one time. We're not, that's the reason we're doing this, we won't have to touch that money. But we had also talked about we could bring it down just a little bit if we needed to. And we, so, I'm not sure.
The reserves, huh, our reserves?
Yeah, we, remember we talked about we can need to bring it to a certain point and then, so we couldn't, gonna go this way, we couldn't, we were gonna foredo it. That's when we called Lynn in, so I'm not sure what is there that we could, cause we, we decided we could come down some, but not much. So I'm not sure what that sum is. But that's where we brought Lynn in.
What was it, twelve million was the road, road bridge and then we're gonna take it down maybe to ten, we're gonna stop it at ten, but we kinda agreed to, that we were, we were gonna keep a ten million dollar reserve in place on Road and Bridge.
What are we now, twelveish?
Twelve, I think, after we get through, I got, that's obligations we got on the table this year, FYI coming up, that we're in. I think she said it was gonna be around twelve, twelve and a half, uh, so.
Yeah, if we don't, I mean, if we don't do something, we're gonna drop below the ten, ten this year, if we keep on the path we did.
With these projects.
Yeah.
Or Steve, that we're taking the, the two million every year to bring it over, we can't do that anymore.
That's right. I mean.
Well, we talked about that, we knew that.
Stop that, you know.
We already knew that, so, yeah.
This is the last year for that, so we gotta stop that, so we went, anyway we do it, it's gonna impact the budget on me. And, uh, what we didn't wanna do, when me and Miss Laura was talking about it, didn't wanna impact our cash again. Yeah.
We're having the past, yeah.
I think the solution.
So let me ask you this, i- it's currently as we have it, uh, with the fourteen million, if we do the fourteen million, how much that fourteen million is gonna be going into doing overlays?
None of it. None of it.
That'll be done.
No, cause that's, that's gonna be our road fund.
Yeah, not vote for it in your bond.
That's the road budget, right.
Well, if we do that, then we're shorting our road fund already.
No.
Uh, yeah, we are.
We're gonna do our money back, aren't we?
Paying it back.
So, no. Can we get some real players?
Yeah.
Mr. Lynn, the sixteen million dollar figure is designed to stabilize road, y'all understand that, so we keep, I keep hearing.
That's what I'm saying, so if we do fourteen, the road's not gonna hold.
A million of that's going back to the cities.
Yeah, we're, we're sixteen million.
If we do fourteen, we are taking money out of road.
Yeah, but, oh, you're right.
We're sixteen, though.
Uh.
Yeah, if we go sixteen, then like, if we go sixteen, then how much?
Yes.
Well, they'll, they'll be made whole for the two years. So he's not gonna get any extra, he's basically gonna get replaced for what we're taking out. So we're not gonna have any additional money in there to do any additional road projects.
That's correct.
Wait.
Unless you narrow them down over that sixteen million dollars.
Right.
Isolate them right now.
Yeah. Yeah.
If there's additional overlay projects, I mean, there's seventy miles, twenty million gains up there that needs overlaid, according to our study.
Well, you got, you can do.
Overlay or micro or something, overlay or micro.
So, any combination, no, no, that's just overlay.
Yeah.
It, it's more than seventy if we add the microbes and all that other kind of stuff like that. So, that's what I'm saying, I, you, you could.
That won't, that's not gonna come out of there, though, Daniel.
If.
No, I, I, I'm, I'm with you.
Not affecting that.
To seed money?
There's no way I'm going along.
And I mean, uh, Laura had told me that we were gonna get two to one on our money, so we'd be able to do double the amount of road projects.
Because you wouldn't be taking, because you wouldn't be taking money out of road, I think, was the.
No, no, she's saying we were gonna be able to get double on our money, uh, that we would be able to actually do more work.
Yes.
Uh, than what we normally do. Is that, you, Laura told me we, we were gonna get two to one, basically, but that doesn't seem to be the case.
I recall a little of that conversation, I can't remember exactly how that proceeded.
Yeah.
Uh, that's got to be that for every two dollars we put in, we're getting a dollar out of the grants, out of money that's coming from other sources, if you look at your numbers, fourteen million is us and eight million is somebody else. That's basically two to one, that had to be what she was talking about, I wasn't in that conversation. That's the only thing that makes sense to me, is that we're in it for two instead of three. We're getting, we're getting a hundred percent of the mileage for the cost of sixty-seven cents.
I, I guess I'm not following, cause the way I understand it, we're gonna get dollar for dollar.
The county's in.
We're gonna do, we're gonna do twenty million dollars, twenty-two million dollars worth of work for our fourteen million in.
But I was just talking about specifically on the road overlays, not the rest of.
The way I understood it was all the overlay stuff to be done would just come straight out of the road budget.
That's, that's right.
And not, these projects, we're getting robbed of the road budget, won't be coming out of it, so you'll have the funds available then to do this.
You're exactly right, Daniel, you're exactly right, that's what I keep trying to say, this isn't affecting.
It's not affecting the road whatsoever.
Sorry, Mike.
No, but.
Jay, is, is now the time to talk about a bond issue? Look at the numbers, make sure we're good on the numbers and look and see, is there any room in there to pull down as part of bond issuance, some seed money for this drainage district? Is now the time to have that conversation?
Something's gonna have to give, I mean, something's gonna have to give.
Thinking, what, what are we thinking in seed money, are we thinking a half a million?
Personally, I think a million dollars a year and that's really just touching the surface.
To start it.
But have we got, have we got any kind of design to where we go with that, I mean, to start with, nothing yet?
Yes, you, you have.
Well, we got preliminary.
Well, I know what we saw the other day, yeah.
Yes, that's your roadmap, Jared, to get you there? But just as a helpful reminder, they told you standing right there when they gave that presentation, that you're, you're two years away from having a drainage district structure in place. Two, wait, if you started right now, we're two years down the road getting a drainage district structure in place. We're not even talking about millage at that point.
Here, 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 here's my take on the fourteen, I know it's not fourteen million, I know it's sixteen million, but my take on the sixteen million is, we can't put seven million dollars on nine miles of road. So if we're gonna go along and take all the free state money, the BP money, the other money that comes in, the one point three, do the Gunner Road extension for one point three, take the other five million, five point three million and pick the drainage district parts of that. If Mike's got something else that's gotta be done, take that five million and spread it wherever, and then the million dollars we've already put in Gunner Road, let it sit there, cause all it is is land acquisition and it just stays there.
Daniel, y'all listen, and y'all, that, and I'm not try, I, I know, I'm not trying, I'm not trying to be greedy. We started this and we voted on it, we went a lot down this road, we've gotten here, we've been working on this Gunner Road since oh eight.
I know.
Trying to get there.
I know.
And we're, and we, we.
Which one would you rather do, the extension or the Gunner Road?
We really need to do both of them.
But if you had to choose, which one would you rather do?
I, I can't make a decision, we needed both of them.
So.
But, wait a minute, but, but I've gotten, but we've gotten the money to do the extension, with the exception of one point three. So, so, the, I need to do both of them, make it be complete down there and help that happen. And, and I need, I mean, I really.
You can get, you can get two other votes, I'm just not voting for seven million dollars on nine miles of road.
Well, I understand, but I'm gonna tell you, I would, I've never, I've never gone against something that's gone up there, even if I didn't completely agree with it, as far as, uh.
How about the, uh, how about the hall bond stuff, you didn't like it?
No, I'm not.
You voted against that?
I hadn't voted against it.
You did, it was three to two, you didn't buy, both voted against it.
Well, up in that, on that road.
It was in that area on those roads that they were tearing up.
Well, it's not quite the same, but anyway. It's not quite the same.
All right. My, I, I, that's, that's my take. I'm just not voting for the five million on that.
Well, I, I would appreciate the support to do it.
And I understand.
I'd appreciate the support to do that.
I need y'all to, uh.
And Jay, I.
It's time for this board to get on with the drainage district.
And I've, and I've been, and I, I'm with you on the drainage dis- district, I am. And, uh, I've never, I know we gotta do something, I'm there for what we need to do. But that's, uh, you know, like you said, it's a little down the road and I understand that. I'm, I, I recognize it. I think we all recognize that, but I wish you'd recognize the safety factor, the, the need for this down on the south end. And I'd, I just appreciate you, let's, let's move in forward to this.
You know, I'm not wanting to wait two years, I mean, I got these people's fences falling literally in the ditch.
I got the same situation, Mill Creek's the same way.
Well, I know.
But I.
And that's part of the drainage district.
But at least we've done something in Mill Creek, we ain't done nothing in Oak Grove, you know, I mean, I keep, I hate to keep harping on it, but it is a problem, not only that, going through the soccer fields, you know, I know that's a small amount of avalanche there.
I'm with you.
But they're losing their soccer fields, I guarantee that's gonna be about a thousand plus parentries gonna be coming down our heads.
All right. Can we not take something out of the, the, uh, fund, the general fund that we have left there? Can we not stake something there?
The road fund? Out, out of the twelve million we have?
Yeah, something there to start there.
I don't wanna take anything out of the road fund that's gonna take away from the almost hundred miles of road work, it needs to be done.
It's not affecting his budget now. His, his budget's the same.
Which road fund you gonna take it out of?
I said his budget is the same, this year, we're not affecting it.
I'm talking about, this is a five-year plan to help get the roads caught up, we've had so much growth at the reservoir that we're so far behind, there's no way under the current budget, we can fix the roads up there.
Man, oh, that road plan that was sent to us is not actually accurate.
Yeah, it's worse, it's worse than that plan.
It's gonna take two million dollars out of it.
Yeah, it, it, it's, it's worse, I agree with you.
Well, I just would plead with you to go ahead and do the, do this.
Really, if, if we don't do any, I mean, Mike is gonna beat two million less.
Then he's already.
Because we've pulled it out before, so when you say take it out of Mike's, he's already losing two million.
I really think we need to focus on, on.
What projects we're gonna do?
Projects, so we really have a, a time control over what the bond issue's gonna be and we need to look and see if it's possible, can we stay at the sixteen million and address Jay's concern about a drainage district? Can we stay at the sixteen million, or are we gonna have to tweak the bond issue a little bit to get enough for that seed money? And if so, then make sure that we say that the issuance amount is sufficient to cover all that. I, I would say at this point, we need to, we need to submit an intent notification that says the bond issue could be up to eighteen million dollars.
Yeah, but Craig, that's just gonna be one-time money, you know?
That's correct, and what I'm telling you right now, Jay, is I'm, I'm struggling to know how we can get a drainage district created legally so that there is jurisdiction for us to get out of road right-of-way, when I say us, I'm talking about the county. And, and in each sort of timely manner, I, we're gonna have to really struggle to study how we're gonna do that. In my head, I'm seeing us do a very narrowly tailored little district that just simply affects Oak Grove, we may wanna go ahead and widen it out.
See, if we, if we're gonna do that, then take the overlay district.
Yeah, something like that, we need to, we need to talk about jurisdictional boundaries, number one, then it, it needs seed money. And I'm thinking, Jay, that's gonna be well into twenty for us getting that done.
Man.
That's where I think we are.
All right, I'll just have all these people start coming to the board meeting.
Bring them on.
Get Dave to the front, have a shelter, got plenty of space there to put up the vehicles. I'm not in favor of spending bond money on overlays, I'd like to say that, I'm not gonna spend, I'm not gonna do twelve fifty million money for one, if I have to wanna do something different, I don't care. Uh, that doesn't make sense to me. We can go down, go down the list, about each, each one, each project, opposed to a group.
Let's do it.
How you wanna do it.
I think, look, I like the whole group.
I'm not voting for the whole group, but you can get two others.
I think Jay should get a million dollar seed, even if he's not spending it, at least it'd be on the record, we're starting the seed money with a million dollars and then we can do our timely drafting of this district and at, uh, at least the wheel is moving and give Jay some relief.
I think we did nothing but spend a million and a half already, and I'm all for the drainage district, I really am. I'm all for start that seed money, and I'm not for the Oak Grove or the Mill Creek seed money, you know, I mean, I mean, we got other drainage issues in this county and granted, there's are, but we've got some in three and then in one, you know.
Well, I'll be honest with you, you know, whenever we did the study, I, I was not really happy with what they showed us the other day because our, obviously, they identified where we have real stormwater issues. But our biggest issue is on private property where people have sinkholes, where the infrastructure.
Bank stabilization, yep.
Yeah, and, and erosion control. I mean, you got it live oaks, you know, you got a guy over there that was so mad at the county, he kept coming to us, he's got sinkholes on his yard and it's because of the drainage that goes through there.
Fox Bay, Fox, Fox Bay, they got a lawsuit against us right now, about.
To me, I think that's where our money needs to go. You know, and they didn't address any of that.
I'm, I'm sure you're not a problem with the seed money as long as it can water brush it out, as opposed to specifically saying Mill Creek and Oak Grove.
Yeah, I, I agree with that.
I'm with it, you know.
I, I just wanted to say that, uh, when we get to do a project, I want Oak Grove to be the first one.
Well, if you, if we obligate, if, I'm with Steve as far as a million, but do, it's that not a million, we not, we can go obligate, but you obviously can't spend it right now.
Well, not only that, we don't need seed money of a million, we need to understand, we gonna have to put a million dollars a year in it.
Well.
Well, there's five point three million right there.
There's gonna be a way of funding it. And currently, in our current tax structure, we're not gonna be able to do that.
You have to raise taxes.
Yeah. Yep, we're gonna have to put on a, a levy in order to create a drainage district.
I think, I think that needs to be clearly repeated, it's, it will be a district that you guys would create that would levy, they would have levying authority to levy a, a village sufficient to fund the operation of that district. Creating a political subdivision.
So, if y'all agree to do that, I'll vote for whatever y'all want me to vote for.
Well, I'm good with that, I've told you that before.
Where are you gonna get that money?
You gotta jump through so many hoops, you gotta get approval from those folks in that, in that district for the levy, you know, you just take-
No, no, I'm talking about across the board.
So he, that's not what he's talking about, no, I, I'm not defi- I'm not defining the district boundaries at this stage, I'm just telling you what the structure would look like, but you all have to decide. If you, if you get a, a tax increase, probably-
That's the craziest, you know, it makes sense.
Across the board, everybody, that's just part of my-
That's the greatest hustle of them all right there.
I'm on board with you for-
You're just going along with him for whatever, cause that's the biggest hustle of them all, what he's talking about. Did you even know what he's saying?
Well-
What did Jay say then? That doesn't even-
What?
Hey, alright, I told you, I said my piece.
Well, I, I just plead with you to move this, to get this, this has been laying out for a long time.
I am, but I'm just telling you, you're screwing it up.
Yeah. I'd like us to just take this and move it, I mean, everybody, Daniel, you're getting quite a bit of work done up there on your end, and I understand-
And, and that's kinda even my point.
Well, I know, I know your point, and I understand, but I, I would like, I, I just plead with you to just move this, we found a way to make this happen, when we kept, and we're looking for another obstacle, and let's, let's, you know, the, the door's there, and I plead with you, go ahead and let's just make it happen.
It's too to- it's, it's just too top heavy. It's just too top heavy.
Well-
So, but, I'm one vote, so-
We've been, we, honestly, we've been top-heavy on some other things over the years, and I, but I understand you, I mean, you weren't here, so I'm not gonna sit there and poke them all out, I'm just saying, so, but, I'd like to, I, I plead with you to go ahead and let's move forward with this, and, uh, make this happen. This affects, it doesn't just affect my district, it affects Bob's district heavily, see, we, we board- Hmm?
In what way?
Traffic from District Three, or whomever, whomever district, maybe your district one day, but I mean, you got lots of traffic come through District Three, that way. And, when they build the Continental Tire deal, that's a straight passageway, it's being built, straight passageway from
But you know, you're talking about an extension-
That end, straight across Gunner Road to-
That we haven't even gone through and done a study to determine the need of.
Yeah.
And you still say, okay, well, still, I got it, but, I said my piece.
I just appreciate it, there's a lot of people there with too, so.
Like I said, Gunner Road extension, we know it's too far in that, we, you know, we should've stopped that a while back.
And the cost was one million two to finish.
I, I, I'm with you, I'm with you, okay.
And, uh, I just, that's been hard to sit there and walk away from either here.
And the other five point three is gonna be-
Yeah, I, I can't-
Be more than, the other five point three is, is-
I, I agree with you on the extension, the one point three, but the five point three on the other side?
I think we could leave a million, million three in there and get that road ready for NPO. I know we've already spent eight hundred thousand, but some, most of that money was buying land, that we're not fixing to give back, we would've bought it anyhow, we would've just bought another two, three foot.
It's, it's ours now.
And, I mean, I've rode down the road, and it, it's, it was paved two years ago.
No, 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 it was paved nearly eight years ago.
No.
Yes, what happened when we didn't do the bond?
We hadn't paved Gunner Road in eight years?
Well, if we didn't do the bond, we didn't have any choice but do something to it, and so we, we paved it thin.
Which is when?
Huh?
Which is when?
Would've been about eight years ago.
Eight years ago.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And so, but to, to do this other deal, you're, you're implying, Steve, you're implying would be, some of that is gonna be almost impossible designed that way, because those houses, we're very likely wind up buying a house. You get on that east end, west end-
Y'all ain't got no way of knowing that.
We hadn't, we hadn't paved Gunner Road in the last eight years.
The only way they gotta find, tell them, cause it'll be doing PO at the road department, Janice, I have to research the minutes to find out.
I don't think that's right. Is that right, Mike?
He wasn't even here.
If, if George, he can put it over there.
But, way back in George Bobo-
No, but since you've been here, have you paved Gunner Road?
Oh, yeah.
Have you paved, since you've been here?
No, it was back when George Bobo was here.
Yeah.
It was right up, we didn't do the bond, we didn't sort it.
But that was, but that was, but that was the two hundred and fifty thousand that was spent on the last bond on Gunner, what was that, what was that for?
That was for-
Engineering.
Yeah, engineering or something, the two fifty.
The two fifty we spent on the la- the, the two fifty we spent on the last bond-
About ten parcels of right away, yeah, so there was some right away that was in there, I don't know what the cost was.
Then we had to go back.
And then up until this date, we spent eight hundred more thousand on Gunner Road, look, Ms. Law ran it for me, Ma- Ma- Ms. Law ran it for me, she ran the numbers, we spent eight hundred thousand.
So about, I made it so-
So we got a million into it, and then we'll put another five, and the five, the additional five point three's doing what to it?
Com- completed.
But, what is complete? Do what to the road?
It's reconstructing the road, Daniel.
Taking hills out of it, making it wider, those types, that's what I'm asking you.
Taking, okay, taking hills out, it's changing the intersection at the, uh, Briar Hill end, there's a technical dangerous situation, it's changing the intersection, and where Briar Hill Road comes in there, which is terrible, there's, it's, uh, taking the hills out, some of the curves out, uh, it's widening it, it's putting shoulders on it, um, um, it's, it's making it a safer road, safe road, all that road was originally was a gravel road, we just asphalt put on it, and then all that development has been built in there, and, uh-
If we, if we had the money available to spend it, then I, I understand what you're saying, but we don't have it.
Well, we do, because we've, we've got this bond, got this bond-
You're borrowing it from yourself. You're borrowing it from yourself to do it.
But that's the way we've had to do, almost all the projects down the, uh, prior to, I mean, we did so many projects earlier, and, because we had the bond to do them with, and then it, it stopped, and that's when Andrew Chapel and I stopped.
Every time we've always been able to do projects is through, uh, reassessment, and when we have an increase in avalon. So, this will be the first time we've actually just did a bond without some increase in avalon.
So, so, so think about that, so you're gonna spend five point three million dollars on a road-
I get it, I do, man.
That gets less than three thousand cars a day.
I, I do, I understand where you come from. I wish there was a way that we could scale it back some, you know, I mean, personally, I'm not crazy about reconstructing roads, you know, but I will say I-
How well has Henderson succeeded?
Uh, you know, it, it, we got more shoulder, but you write it right now, it's got Yazoo clay in it, I rode it last night. It's got dips all in it, we had a dip in it probably within the first year, you know, um, and, and South Pearson is the same way, you know, um, we ended up with a nice road-
I don't know what you're ever gonna do about that clay, you, you write that one dip on South Pearson, when I was a kid, it was gravel, I got, I'd drive a tractor, it was, it was a dip thin.
South Pearson, we paid two hundred thousand dollars to go in and dig out one part of it because it was clay, and we still got issues with it, you know, so, I think we just-
You say, you say, you say reconstructions don't work, but what about something like Andrew Chapel? I mean, I had been down that road and got beat mercilessly, you know, and it's-
Well, I think that's a road that we have to do, cause it is so terrible, we gonna have to dig out a bunch of dirt out of there, I'm sure once we get into it, you know, it's gonna be expensive to all get out.
I mean, you know-
It's the wor- one of the worst roads in the county right now.
Well, it's probably pretty bad, yeah.
It's one of the worst roads in the county, Andrew Chapel is-
You're gonna take, you're gonna take a lot of these hills out, I think that they'll take, and the curves, you'll make some of the, the parking lot at the, uh, at the nursing home, that's, in fact, let me tell you, that road's so bad, if we campaign, if I'm campaigning, I don't even let my daughter or wife run Gunner Road, I let them go in the neighborhoods, cause you can't hardly get out.
Jared, I thought whenever we didn't do the bond last time, that George went in and did something for the nursing home there.
There's cars still on the road, yeah. And, and, and the whole reason I voted to support Gunner Road, initially, it got on board a couple of years ago, was a safety factor, you know, that's what was pushed,
Same thing here.
Pushed to this board, Jared and Sullivan wasn't here at the same time, and it was the safety factor, it's the curves, you know, the amount of traffic that's, that's continuing, cause all we're gonna do when we clean it up, is this gonna come be a speedway between four sixty-nine and forty-nine, which, I mean, that's just part of the-
But it is what it is.
That's what happened, we rode your fence.
I got you, I'm just saying, I don't think that's worth, I, I understand what I'm gonna say.
Yeah.
Bob, you are on the board, CNPD, if we get that design ready and it qualifies, with all of what we're hearing, it's this hilly and turns and the traffic, I mean, we're talking about, what, another two and a half years at when we would be applying for the money again, and wouldn't it, wouldn't you think that would be a high priority, I mean, to, to take as a project?
It's not everything, that's the reason we got what we got, is because we were willing to put half the money in.
Right, but I'm saying if we-
You put, you put that kind of money in, and then Tim has to go back there and re- redesign it, you know, to meet that standard.
Then you got that money, much money back in it.
Does it?
You're looking at another eight hundred thousand dollars.
I think we'll come out ahead if we do that.
Huh?
I think we'll come out ahead.
Oh, you're gonna put another eight hundred?
We don't have to go, we don't have to go fifty percent, we can go thirty percent.
I don't think it'll qualify.
If we redesign it, it will.
I think if we get it designed, and we've already bought this whole land.
Speak up, I don't think you can redesign something without buying houses, no, seriously.
I don't know, I'm looking at Tim and him, I don't know nothing about designing anything.
You would have to have, you would have to have retainer walls in some places.
To design it according to, to make it qualifiable for NPO.
Yeah.
Probably, and, and I'm certainly not looking at a set plan here, my gut's telling me, vertical is what's gonna get you there, your vertical line, and then around the nursing home area, but, uh, I mean, your, your cost would go up, but you can put retaining walls, and, I mean, you can, you can build it, I mean-
You got some places there that I'm telling you, 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 they wouldn't even have a yard left.
How many feet more to make it qualify than where we're gonna be with this?
Well, and that, and that question, I, I don't know the answer.
Well, then how you know you gonna have to take a house?
You don't, you don't say that.
Well, because, Steve, right now, what we got, right now, is going on up in the yard. If we do any, we take any more, they not even gonna build a heart of park in some of those places.
I know this money we're spending right now, with these projects that we're about to do, that was from leftover money, and there should be another round of NPO coming, I would think.
I, I think the, these projects were the, that were the next round.
Were they?
Leftover. No, I think there's still, I think, I don't see what he said.
No, they had this left, they told us it was left over.
They got some extra money that created this pool, and then there was a little bit that got put back, because some folks didn't do what they said they were gonna do, but I think that you're, I think there's another round coming.
Alright, but you're gonna go back to all these people, they're gonna think we've lost our mind to go back and say-
We have, I think we have.
We go back and say, we wanna buy some more right away, and so, I mean-
Well, hang on, before you go there, I just want, for my clarification, Jared, the project that we're doing on North Shore right now was our original NPO project that we got awarded, for the past four years. I mean, we did that in this term.
That's right, and we, we came on the board, we came on the board, we've done it.
Yep, so, right, and so now, I thought this money that we're spending now was just a pile of money from projects that wasn't done. Is that not accurate?
Uh-uh, no, it's not.
I think this is some ex- some extra money that got made available to the NPO for these things, but I still think, I think, but I can't say.
It's not, I don't know, I can't, I can't say, I really can't.
I mean, y'all still on the board, yeah, I need to get on that board till y'all will know what's going on.
Uh, not at all, Jay, he can't tell you how much money's left out there right now.
Yeah, but you at least know if we're gonna, when the next round's coming.
Well, I wouldn't think, well, I wouldn't have, uh-
So, you think that is it, though, you don't think there's another one coming in the next term?
I'll, uh, I'll see if I can find out.
Well, I thought, I thought it was just money gathered up from old projects that rolled off.
No, this money's not, this one's not.
Some, some, some of that money is money coming back that they didn't use, but that, that does happen, they, they redid the ground.
I mean, that is, that is such a quick turnaround for another round of NPOs.
It really is, I, I was surprised too when it showed up, so that's my, that's why I think there's another round coming in a couple of years to-
I don't, well, I can't say about that now, maybe not.
One county, Jay's got needs, and, I mean, people in his district expect to see something, they look here and see fourteen million dollars, and nobody in his district sees anything, Bob looks at it and sees, he's getting very little, Daniel, and then they look, but, but then they look, the- Jared, I think you got the most of the last bond.
No, I didn't.
Got more than anybody else.
No, he didn't.
No.
I thought you, and the second time-
No. No, I didn't.
I mean, I got, I got gravel roads.
I honestly didn't, Steve.
I think he got the most of it, or whoever, whichever district it was back then, uh-
It was Wood Brown.
Oh, Wood Brown, yeah.
Steve, uh, I mean, there would've been, uh, Jay and, uh, District Two.
Everybody in the county, and it's-
I, I didn't get the most of the money.
You got Erlich though, right, Erlich Road?
Yeah.
We did Erlich and Williams and Monterey.
Didn't touch Monterey.
Yeah, we did, we cursed it.
Oh, you don't, we didn't do anything on Williams.
Or whatever that road is that goes on the other side of the road.
Oh, that's the, the little short one, we did Mon- that little short section of Monterey, I'm talking about, I think Monterey all the way out.
No.
We didn't do, we did the short section of Monterey.
Early extension, that, is that what you call the other side?
Right.
I say, just can the bond and do what we can do, and we'll gravel, Andrew Chapel, put some six ten on it.
They go a lot cheaper at a man's time.
Erlich Road got six, seven million dollars from the last bond.
Well, that was the, um, the Blue, that's the, that's the bridge.
I'm just reading it off the sheet, I'm just reading it off the sheet. Monterey got, Monterey Road got two point three, so that's eight, nine million right there. Anyway.
But the, part of the bridge, that bridge that we, that money we got, some of the brid- bridge money we got from government, federal.
I make a motion, we're adjourned, Mr. President.
I second it.
I think, man-
I want you to know how well I've done, it's two o'clock.
Yeah, you don't-
We're not, alright.
He's starting pacing a little bit over there, he's starting pacing a little bit.
Well, Bob, let's just, guys, I wish we just, we got it set up here where we can fund this, and let's fund it. Jay, I'm all on board with you for a district, a drainage district, whatever I can do to help you, and I've told you that all along. But we so, we're so deep into this, the Gunner Road, and we got the money over here for the other one, so-
There's no way he can fund his district, there's nothing here, there's nowhere else he can, he can't fund his district, there's no money.
Well, I still keep saying, you got to fund it, now, fund it in what way, fund it how long? I mean, what are you trying to say, you gonna fund it for, I, I'm not understanding the funding, you're trying to start with.
I think forever, I mean, once we start this drainage program, and, and it's, and twenty years from now, the farmers out where I live are gonna say, I wish I was part of it, because they built subdivisions and shopping malls all around me, and now I can't harvest because it's flooding.
Yeah.
And all the water's coming off of there, going in my fields, uh, our population, I don't think is fixing to stop, and we, even though you're in agriculture zone, you may pay pennies per acre, whereas when you're other areas, it'd be higher. But, I mean, and that's, not something we're gonna resolve today, but it's something that we will, somebody's gonna fight-
But we gotta come up with a drainage, whatever program.
Somebody's gonna fight this, and-
There's, there's a very real cost associated with creating this thing, that has to be accounted for, and I, I, I'm afraid that that's about the best that, that it can be offered at the moment, I, I, my sense is that outside of some other creative way to do it, we're some type of way of actually being able to put shovels in a creek.
So, you don't feel comfortable doing a finding?
I didn't say that in a day, I just, I think we all know what that means.
Yep.
But I do, I'm, I'm with you, I'm on board with you, you start that funding process, and I do think it's not gonna be a definitive period energy, I think it's gonna be a, it may be, we can fluctuate the amount of monies each year contributed to it maybe, but I think this is gonna be an ongoing issue, this county's gonna be facing.
I've been in bad shape without them peanuts, you know?
Well, I just urge you to, to please go with what we, how we got to fund it.
Alright.
So, there's a couple of things that would be helpful to know, I don't know if y'all are prepared or not, but it would be helpful to know that we either are or not proceeding with the bond issue, uh, there's work that has to be done to get us ready for that.
We are proceeding with it, because for sure, we got some projects we have to do.
Let me ask you something, is there a way, Lynn, well, for, for Jay, is there a way to put some, a little more in it for Jay?
Yeah, I'm not wanting to raise it, I don't want to raise it.
Well, I'm talk-
I'm not kissing his large ass to get him to make this progress.
Oh, hey, hey, hey.
Alright, well, no, I'm just saying, I'm just saying increasing bonds a little bit. I'm just saying-
Greatest project, and that's as far as I go.
Well, alright, well, I mean, I was just thinking-
He's not willing to fund it.
Well, take something out of here and fund it.
Well, either way, I wish we could go and fund this, and put some of this, and, and end this deal, end this thing on Gunner Road that we've been working on for so long, Jay, you've been right there with me all along.
Jay?
Yeah.
You've been right there with me all along.
I know it, I, I always have been.
And I appreciate you staying with me, get this, get this done.
Where we can tell at this point who we need to be talking to about preparing a bond issue. At this point, who we need to be talking to about preparing a bond issue.
Yeah, I think, I think the board's on board, right, everybody on board that we're gonna do a bond of some kind?
Right.
Yes.
No, you got it, yeah.
I mean, I'm gonna vote against it, but.
You gonna vote against it if we leave both of Jerry's projects on there? What if we have one on there?
All right, we'll go.
Well.
Would you vote for that?
Yeah, because it's, there's that five point three put on a road that we don't need right now.
We do need it, Daniel, I'm telling you, if it was in your district, you would need, I just wish you would.
I wouldn't come to you on a road that gets less than three thousand cars a day, that we've already put a million into, and say, I need another five point three, when we don't have it. If we had it sitting around there, I'd say, yeah, we got it.
But, but we have a way to fund it, and I understand if we don't, we, you're right, we don't have a pool to that, but we have a way to fund it. And we have a way to fund all these projects, including your projects here.
The best plan was to take the two point eight BP money, put it on Gunner Road right there, and offset it, finish what we already started instead of creating this new project. But somehow mysteriously died in committee, I understand how it works, we put it off in December to, not to put off the.
No, I'm talking about.
Hang on, not to go through the application part in December to take us off the NPO, I got all that. So we politic it all the way to this point here, where you're forced into putting that money on a road that doesn't exist, that we don't even know if we need or not.
It, it's.
So we got it.
Well needed.
And I'll go ahead, and because they're giving us six million dollars or whatever, five million dollars, fine, put one point three and get it done.
Well, I, I wish, okay, that's your take on it, guys, the rest of you, I wish you would look at completing this road, the five point three, complete Gunner Road. I urge you to please, just move this forward and, and complete this, and complete the pro- every project that's on here. That's, that's where I, I would like to do, complete every project here.
You have to be, to me, you have to be a fiscal conservative looking at this stuff, and that's not it.
Yeah.
But if you think it is, it is.
So, uh, again, if, if we tell whoever y'all want to work with to set up getting the bond in place to issue, whoever that ends up being. To leave it blank as far as the amount of the issues? We, can we?
I think we.
We just need to.
Yeah, you go, I think you bring out that, I mean, Daniel may be against it, but the rest of us four realize we need a bond issue, and I think, aren't we, other four of us?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you can go, we'll work on the balance, please.
I'm in balance.
All right, all right, and, and are we, obviously, it seems to me that Lynn and, uh, the, the actions of government, government consultants already can get all the documentation in place. We're gonna continue to work with government consultants for purposes of the bond issue, is that correct?
Yes. Everybody shake their head, yes.
Yeah.
Everybody have you?
Yes.
You have to have bond counsel, you know that, um, are we today at a place where we can go ahead and?
Mulder Snow?
Okay. So. Uh, the, what I intend.
Y'all do Mulder Snow?
Yeah.
Mulder Snow?
And what I intend to add on it then.
Pretty much, yeah.
Lynn and I will communicate appropriately with, with that.
I know, I ain't gonna shit.
Set of professionals to start moving the ball down the line. We will not assume any dollar figures at this point, we will not assume any projects, we will structure it, there's a lot of placeability.
If we don't do Gunner Road, I'm not.
I make a motion, we add to the, hey, Mr. President.
I mean, I don't wanna just go to other things for the hell of it.
Mr. President.
Jay, we got.
He's talking, he's talking, he's talking.
I make a motion, we add to the agenda that, that what Mr. Slade just said, engage the government consultants and make, uh, Mulder Snow, to work on the bond. The bond will not be designated at this point in time, but they have authorization to move forward with that.
So we're gonna just keep pushing, Dan, we've been here two o'clock, and we're not gonna make a decision?
I think we're even gonna make the decision.
This is just, are we gonna?
They should just get the ball moving.
Well, why don't we just go ahead and, go ahead and do it, make decisions.
All right, we'll make the motion.
Okay, I make the motion to fund the, um, to the bond issue as we've, uh, spending a set for the amount, uh, and the way we've had it structured. To cover all the projects we have on this product sheet.
All right, do we have a second?
I wish you would really think about that, this is an opportunity to, to do something that we've been working on a long time, I wish you wouldn't do this and die for lack of a second. This is the way we got, we can structure it. And I've worked hard on it, everybody's worked hard on it, and I urge you to, to second the motion, and let's move forward where I can, we can get this going. This is not just District One, this is Al- Rankin County, and I'm urging you because we need to try to make the county whole, we're doing the things, I, please, I urge somebody to second it. And let's, uh, move this forward, I, I would not do this to any, any of y'all.
Well, I'm not doing anything to you, you know, I'm not doing anything to you.
No, I'm just saying, I'm not, I would, I would second and move on forward with you.
I'm just telling you, I don't agree with the, the spending of the money.
I, I understand, I understand. I'm not arguing that point with you, that's your opinion.
Yeah, Jared, I don't feel the consensus of the board is with you.
Well, why don't you second it and see?
I don't, I don't wanna put myself in that position.
Well, I mean, Steve, Bob, I've, Bob, this affects a lot of your people too.
It does, but I just, I'm not in that position, I just. Daniel has some good points, you know, and, and Gunner Road has survived ten years, it can probably survive a couple more years, if they get the cut and stuff, you know?
So, then what's your, what's your take?
The state money, the state money's not playing out like we designed it to play out.
We're on a motion on the floor.
Just a minute, just a minute.
I was very, very easy to kick, uh, Gunner Road Extension to the curb, but I just can't now with five point eight million of, of Fed money involved, it's, you know, I, I agree with Daniel, but they. I think there's probably a need there, we haven't really probably addressed it correctly, but, you know, but with five point eight million of a seven million dollar project, man, you talking about being called stupid not to do it?
I agree with you.
There was?
It's just, but I was prepared to kick it to the curb immediately, the Gunner Road Extension, and vote on Gunner Road, you know?
Well, okay, this discussion, this thing, you talked, y'all talking about gonna try to reapply, you realize we're gonna have way more money in it then. I mean, to try to reapply for funding to do.
More than five million?
Huh?
More than five million?
No, but I'm just saying, we're gonna, we're in it for.
Way more money then.
Well, no, just listen.
I mean.
All right, is there a second? All right, motion fails. Now we're back to the table.
Let me ask y'all this, would y'all be willing to commit to putting Gunner Road forward as a NPO project?
Yes.
It would.
Would you be willing to do that?
Yeah, can you ballpark what that cost to do?
Well, five, well, it's gonna be more than five million now, cause we're gonna have to go and redesign it.
It's gonna be considerably more.
And we're gonna have to buy some right away.
You're running low to another half million, million dollars to do a redesign?
A minute.
Mr. Slade will have to kill the fun again.
Yes, you, when you do your redesign, you are probably going to have to go back and re-acquire additional right away.
Yep, we understand.
From the property owners you already have got right away from, some of whom have not been real happy about the amount of right away that was being acquired originally. So, this is not going to be an easy thing to do, more than likely, in this case, you're gonna find that several property owners who have already. Had to be dealt with to get the right way we got, are, are going to resist completely any additional right away acquisition, which is gonna push us over into him and a domain.
Which is, well, we could be in on the other spot, right?
No.
We could be in on the extension.
Yeah, we can all agree.
But the land that we have already bought, you would have bought that anyhow, we just got to get some places, some more.
More.
Yeah, Steve, you go back to them, they're, they're already, some of them is okay there, they're not gonna be okay, you keep stretching it out, and some of the places really gonna wind up being a house.
I've got, we're losing two houses and two or three trailers on Andrew Chapel, and we just, and it's the thing, is that the safety, if it's unsafe, this will make it.
We've got really, really fortunate.
I know you gotta go redesign.
I know, well.
And we got.
Look at it, I'm trying to figure out what it's. I'm in a very different position, because I have the most gravel roads in Rankin County, from my people's seat, then I, they don't feel like that I represent them, oh.
So that ain't gonna work. So there's nothing we can do currently?
All right, you, uh, did we have a motion on, Bob made that motion?
Bob's motion was pending, Jared introduced a motion to amend Bob's motion, it's the effect of it, that did not get a second, so that amended motion is now dead, we're back to.
I second Bob's motion.
What was Bob's motion?
Bob's motion is essentially to move forward with government consultants.
On, without putting them.
With no amount.
No amount.
No amount.